Hi hello and welcome to Joyful Parenting. In this week, we are with Anurag Arakanga, a professional storyteller. And they teach kids reading class, puppet stories, phonics classes, kids yoga. They do many activities under the name of Story Clouds. And they are also a preschool teacher trainer. Welcome to our channel, Anurag.
Thank you, Swati. First, I want to say that you are a huge fan. You invited me to this platform. The question is, why should we tell stories to children? Everyone has a question. How should we tell them? It is a very interesting topic. So, let us discuss it in detail. And in this show, World Storytelling Day. We saw that there is a theme for celebration. In this show, Together We Can. This is a theme that we celebrate all of us. After seeing the story, we all agree on how to bring stories to children. This is a small idea that we all share. I am very excited to share this with you, Joyful Parenting. Thank you, Swati.
Thank you and it is my pleasure. So, in this theme, we will start the story session. And I am very happy. And I have received your request. I thank you very much. And before going into session, can you explain the Story Clouds and your logo?
Story Clouds. Story Clouds is a little story. What is it? In our small years, we have a little brother-in-law. Is he not? When we ask him what is he doing, what is he doing, what is he doing? What do you know about him? I will tell you from my father. The same way, I feel that when I see Magan's family, every movement in their family is like a unicorn. Now we are talking about a unicorn. Like a horse running, or a dragon running. Or a dragon running. That was what I thought. It was very touching to me. After that, I decided to take my life journey and storytelling profession. When I think about it, everyone needs a tagline. Is it not? Tagline after, what is it? Everyone voted for it. If we have any difficulties, when we start our thought process, clouds are everywhere in our mind. That is why I created Story Clouds. And it is a very good journey. Two years have passed. Children are telling stories. And God bless, this should go on and on.
Definitely, you have achieved a great dream of your story clouds. And thank you so much. Shall we go to the session? Okay. So, storytelling, your opinion, what do you think?
To tell stories, storytelling is a skill. A skill is impossible. Whether we are children or adults, whoever is there, it is okay. It is a matter of speech. How should we say it? Proper action is equal to proper attitude. In the action, no matter who says something, it will be taken. That is impossible. Storytelling is a powerful tool. We must have a magic in our house. Whether it is a father or a grandmother, we can watch the family. What is our brother-in-law like? We can easily do good things. Of course, whatever it is, it comes. But our life journey, our Indian mindset, we can achieve good things. In this story, when we talk about this kind of a parent, we will see a big change to everyone. Is it? What is it that we should use in this? Cultural values. We should give cultural values to the next generation. Is it? After that, we should give family values. Our family, our family. That is why we have brought stories to our father's family. How should we take them? Next, we should give emotional values. How do we know what we are feeling? How should we react? How should we give reaction? How should we balance emotional values? If we take everything, we will develop a relationship with our friends. When it develops, the bonding will be on another level. That is why I use it. So, this is a target to achieve in storytelling. I believe this. This is what our father had done in their family. We gave them our parents. Now, it is on our hands. If we have a desire, we should take it to the next generation. If we do not do it, we will break into nuclear. We are not in a family or a father's family. We are not in the same house. Everyone is alone. Because in our life path, we need to go somewhere. So, we are alone. So, we should tell the things we know. This is very useful to our children. And it is a value-added service. Not only to us, but to our children. We should take this from the beginning. This is my little gift to everyone.
Definitely, we should teach children storytelling. There are many things we should teach them. I believe this strongly. Because since I was a child, I have inherited storytelling habits. I know the impact is important. And that is why we are conducting the storytelling session. Many people have forgotten that storytelling, book reading, etc. It is a thought for children. When we start storytelling, we start. When should we start telling stories to children?
When should we start? The children should receive how to take them. When we take stories, we will add values. What will happen to children because of this? Our brain development, we all know as a parent. Brain development will happen. Because they are starting to listen. They are starting to hear. When they start hearing, our brain neurons connect. The nerve connecting starts. One on one, we are doing left and right brain activity. After that, we start thinking. Thinking starts automatically, we go to imagination life. When we start imagination life, we talk about the character. How do we overcome difficulties? It is because of that, we get happiness. We start analyzing two things. We go to the imagination and analyze. When we analyze, we look at the higher thinking level. Then they start talking about it. Language development is also happening. When we talk about language development, we start talking about it. So, what is right? We should give them correctly. Then, when the age increases, they start talking about it. What is this? Because they are connecting. Our parents are not able to talk to them in the same time. Everyone has worked, day care. Of course, that is required now. We cannot say it wrong. In this situation, we don't talk for a long time. I will say something. Talk, it is not possible. If we talk to children, we can't talk to them outside. We shouldn't stop. So, we have to go with that lifestyle. Yes, we have to accept it. So, when we come to the conversation, whether it is wrong or right, we ask them. Is it? So, after we know it, how should we look at the value? How should we go to them? Because the children are exposed to this. That is why I want to say. Because if we go outside, we will go backwards. It is not possible now. If you go to school, you can go to 20 days. You can go to the back. I will tell you how to go. So, the children like this, who will talk to them? That is important. So, talking is not possible because our creative thinking, language development is also important. And the atmosphere in our house is also beautiful. When we talk to children, our stress is less. Is it? So, when this is happening, children should do what? For example, if we explain the situation to children, this is not allowed. We will say this. You should not do this. If you say this, the children will accept it. We put a small bomb. Put the bomb. Look, Papa, the bomb was exploded. What should we do? Should we train it? In this kind of dramatic way, we should tell the story. Definitely, they will accept it. So, the story is first started by mother. I will say it later. It is started by mother. So, they will do it. It is started by mother. At the end of the day, mother is complete a director. She is a director, music player, everything for a child. She is a hero for a child. So, a responsible mother in storytelling. They are like children are just a clay. What should we do? So, that is very important in storytelling. And coming to the next point, when should learn? Seeing that a mother, a young mother, right from her womb, when she is in the womb, they can start telling a story to the child. How should I say? If you do it, the bonding between mother and child will definitely develop. You can do miracles. Mother said correctly. That is a bonding development. Any wall is there in the womb, it is okay. So, when should start? When a child has brain development, it starts at the 3rd month. So, 3rd month, brain and heart will start to grow. The development starts. So, when children come, we talk a lot. We say, Good morning, baby. Today, we did two things. Today, we will talk about the story. This story is like this. I have seen this picture. This picture, this lion and mouse are doing the same thing. The cat and mouse helped the lion. They became a very good friend. In this way, we should talk about moral values in stories. When we are in the womb, we start talking. Exchange the things with the new. Do you have the belief that you will go to the food? The same way, when we started storytelling, definitely, we should travel. That is impossible. After 27-28 weeks, the child's development ends. Is it? During that period, children have connection with the value. They have a feeling of the mother. We will talk about it all. I am saying a small thing. During the delivery time, you can start talking to the child. See, when something happens, you have to come here, like you are struggling. We will talk about it with children. So, you are not struggling, I am not struggling. That is why we should make a rule for children. In our story, we should tell children about other things. Is it? So, after we come to the future, we should do it. It is impossible. Right from the womb, we should do it. Okay, we did it in the womb. What should we do next? After we have born, should we do storytelling? That is the question. Children, they can tell everything in the background. If they are sitting, they are sleeping, they are crying. It is okay. You have no time. You have a book. You have a favorite book. A newspaper is okay. If you tell the story, it is okay. It is okay. Now, comics, books, anything. Sit and talk to the child. Sit and tell the story to the child. And everything will be understood by the child. They will ask the child. Because subconsciously, when we are in the womb, we are asking what is the story. So, they will be more comfortable when they listen to our voice. A safe place inside. Next, we have spent 6 months. We should do it. So, 6 months, we should do it. Do we ask our children? Definitely, ask them. When you have done 6 months, 2 years, you can see the difference of your child after 2.5. Because 2-3, toddlers are very fast on their toast, on their food. Is it? 3-4, they are very child-centric. They see everything. Oh, I told you wrong. You went away. They are angry. Because children are our mirror. What should we do, they will do. So, we have seen how they do good things. Definitely, they will accept it. They will say. If they see the ground, they will say, What is this? If they see the ground, they will say, It is okay. If you rub it, the water will come out. That is why we have said psychologically. Definitely, do you see the ground? Is it? There are many parents like this. So, just push them with the positive vibes. That is what I will tell to all the parents. And by using the storytelling, they can do lots of magic. They will do it.
Wow, nice. You said it step by step. Of course, storytelling is a powerful tool. Because storytelling is very useful to children positively. Definitely. And you explained it well. Do you have your personal experience?
Thank you. I have my personal experience. And before, I have something to say. All parents who ask us, children are not allowed to read or read books. If you do not do it, there is a small difficulty. How should we correct it? We all know. Whatever it is, we practice 21 days. Definitely, it will be 20 seconds. You will see the fruitful result. Is it? So, when we start telling stories, we start telling stories. I will say it. Come, come, sit. I will read books. You can ask. That is what I said. What children can ask? That is why we should create an environment. Is it? When we eat, everyone has a big plus point. If you watch YouTube, or if you turn on TV, play a funny song. If you watch it, you will go to the toilet. Is it? You did not do that. My father, my mother, my father, my mother, they talked to us. When they talk to us, we eat. We do not know. We go to the other side. That is why our jaw opens. It opens well. Then, we start eating. If you watch TV, what will happen? When this happens, the organ, the... It is possible to develop the jaw. They just open their lips and put their food inside. And they start chewing. Chewing does not even happen. Everything is smashed. In the spoon, the garbage box, ready-made food is there. Mix it in the toilet. You did that. 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 Children, you drink it in the toilet. You can only drink it in the toilet. You can only drink it in the toilet. It is okay. So, when we do it, definitely, our jaw will develop. So, they connect with us. Is it? So, when we talk, you have to check it. You have to check it. The food pipe and windpipe connect. When you process it like this, definitely, it is very helpful to children. So, when we eat, we should talk. What should we talk? What should we do in the bedroom? What should we do? That is what I will say. If you say it like this, children go to school. They talk about it. So, my son, do you speak? It is happening in school. What is it? You should spend time with them. That is why it is a work for all parents. Okay? How should we tell stories to children? Seeing that they missed 6 months, 2 years. We created a reading space. When we are in the bedroom, we have a little hand. Or a paper. We put a drop. We put attention. This drawing is in the book. Let us read. Let us see. What is it? We put the book. If you read the book, you cannot read the sentence. They hate it. They are afraid of it. So, please do not make them to read. First, discuss about the pictures of the story. We will talk about the picture walk.
Okay.
So, we do the picture walk. And the questions in the picture. Papa, what do you know about this? What is it? Why should we do it? Let us do a play. Then, the play goes over a page. It is a story. Papa, should we see it? Then, we will finish the story. This is the journey. We will take it to 24 hours. You only read one book. You can do it. So, it is 20 days college. On the 21st day, we will tell the story to the children. The story is in a line. I am not reading it. Do you read it? Then, we start reading. When we start telling, we will come to the children in the background. When we put a flag, it is like this. So, storytelling, in the 21 days journey, you will start making a child to read a book also without knowing the spelling. That is impossible. Okay? So, exchange of the side words. The messages go to our brain. It is rest in our mind. So, in this book, if you have a habit, definitely, a child will start listening to the story. We can give a small target. But yes, we have to face the challenge. And at some point, a parent will say, It is too late. Do it like this. Other than that, try for 20 days. Do it in the book. That is why we should create a situation. That is why I said. Now, the child has come to learn the story now to me.
Wow, nice. You explained it well. It is very useful tips. Many children, you said it like this. Now, they are reading books. They should try 21 day challenge. Definitely, parents should try. And many books reading. Many things, we cannot concentrate all of them. Some things are forgotten. We do not know. Many things, practical values are given to them. And wide variety of knowledge is available to them. When a child is in school, it is not possible to learn. Apart from school, we should have a book reading habit. It is self-learning. They should create a learning love. It is very helpful.
Definitely. That is what I said. Sorry. That is not all. Children have a lot of books. We should take them. We should take them. We should take them. We should take books from the library. We should do books. So, they should have awareness. They should do it like this. That is why we should take them. First, overstep. Go to the classroom. Go to the library. I said, this exam. Go to Hindi class. It is not possible. What is it? Do you like it? Do you like part of stories? First, we give lots of illustration books. Now, you have books up to level 1 and level 4. So, illustrated value-added stories are there. So, they will start relating the stories to the pictures. After that, they start developing. So, even if you are sitting, I have to say my personal experience. I can tell that my brother doctor, my brother connect to the baby. My brother is a sister. Right from the womb. My school job, I was a teacher. My school job, I was working. I will go to my mama's place. When I go, I will sit in front of baby and I will speak to the baby. Later, I came back to school. I will do this. Today, I will tell a little story. I will tell a little story. I will share with you. And my brother's wife, they are teaching. I will go and sit and talk to the baby. And that is like 9 months ago. Before the delivery, you do not believe. My father said, My father is in school. I will go to school. After that, I will meet you. You said a little story. How did you say? If I come, I will not miss you. You do not believe. My father said, It is correct. I came on that. My father was in school. I was cleaning. I went to my mother's house. It was 3:00 or 4:00. There, the pain starts. And she came to me beautifully to this world. And she was the first to come. But the doctor said, I will tell you. So, that relationship, till now, she is going to turn 5 in the month of June now. I will tell you. And no matter what you say, you will not mistake. If you say it wrong, they will tell you. That is why I have a mindset. After we have born, I will tell you the same story. After 6 months, I will sleep. Or I will sleep. Or I will sleep. I will sleep with the sun. We will show a baby to the sun, right? That time, I will say, See, you are standing in front of the sun. And you are going to get the energy and get lots of vitamin D. And this is the story that you are going to get. We are standing in front of the sun. I will tell anything to you. I will share with you. And when you sleep, one story, until I finish the story, you will know it. So, that is where I am traveling. I will repeat it. I will do 2 stories in 1 month. So, 15 days, 15 days. I will start telling the story. Now, I am telling you another story. The story is like this. It is like sound, actions. I was a brimstone. I finished the story in another way. The impact is there. Now, even if you give a speech in your school, for 3-4 days, she will pick up that line and she will start reciting that line. And this is a language development has been created. That is my practical experience by my niece. With my niece, actually. And I am so proud to share that experience with you all.
Definitely, thank you. And many parents, it is useful. I said it well. Your journey, your relationship with your sister-in-law. The bonding should be there. And thank you so much. And finally, I asked you. You answered the question. And actually, the question is, why did you choose storytelling profession? Actually, first, I have attended a pandemic last year. I have scheduled the story sessions. After that, that is my...